Governor Child?
Here.
Dr. Jacobov.
Here.
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 All right, so the badge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A resolution for executive session, but bargaining under the Taylor law, ESP and A S P A, matters leading to the employment of particular individuals, employment history of particular individuals or corporations, and to seek legal advice if we have an attorney.
Second.
Second.
All terror?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah, you can hear the... We have two resolutions coming out of executive session.
Agreed.
Everyone go leave. Okay. I think the board is already very pleased with the new boardroom. I hope the audience is as well. Resolution 2019 B O E eighteen, whereas the negotiating teams for the district and the Kingston educational support professionals, NISA ESP, executed a memorandum of agreement on September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, calling for the creation of a four-year successor, collectively negotiated agreement to the one that expired on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, and whereas legislative approval is required by the Board of Education in order to implement the funding of said agreement, now therefore be resolved that the Board hereby ratifies the memorandum agreement between the district and ESP, covering the period from July first, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and authorizes the funding of those monies necessary to implement the provisions of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two collectively negotiated agreement. A copy of the memorandum of agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the meetings of this min... within the minutes of this meeting.
Next.
Any discussion?
I appreciate the efforts done both sides to come to an agreement. I'm glad it's a four-year agreement. Does she give anyone?
Yes, I'm glad it's finally settled.
Okay. I think we all are. Okay, no further comments, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That was me. Sorry.
But unanimously adopted. The second resol...
Don't look behind the curtain. Someone back there working the... working each one of our microphones, so I think he's trying to get it right.
Okay, resolution two thousand nineteen P thirty-one, professional personnel. Be resolved upon the recommendation of Dr. Paul J. Pedalino, Superintendent of Schools, that the following be approved by the Board of Education. Erin Nelson, probationary appointment as elementary school principal, in the elementary school principal tenure area, at an annual salary of one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars, prorated effective August fifteenth, I'm sorry, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, with a probationary appointment ending October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, subject to receipt of composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to educational law section three oh one-two dash C and/or three oh one-two dash D of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years, and if the probationer receives an ineffective composite in the final year of the probationary period, he or she shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Professional certification, school administrator, supervisor.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm just really glad I've been welcomed, Ms. Nelson, into that position. I think you'll do great, and I think we're really lucky to have you.
I'd like to congratulate Ms. Nelson. I've known her for many years, and I think you'll do a wonderful job. Congratulations.
I recall her being on the district leadership team for many years. So I am very... look forward to your tenure as principal.
I would just like to say I'm so thrilled because I know that you were such a master teacher, and I think that you're going to be a great school leader, and I know that we have some wonderful other school leaders that you'll be able to be a great team through the district, so I'm really thrilled.
Can I say?
Yes.
I just... first of all, I want to ask Ms. Nelson to stand up so everyone can see. So as everyone said, Ms. Nelson has been a highly regarded and, you know, very effective teacher in the classroom for here for many years. Stepped in at Bailey as assistant principal, and now we're really excited to have her go out to Meyer, and it's going to be a really good year, and we are going, but I know there were some concerns with filling her shoes at Bailey. We will post for assistant principal at Bailey tomorrow morning and get those filled, but I'm really, really happy that we're going through that process. We ended up with Ms. Nelson, and I'm excited to start on October fifteenth, so thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, we still have to vote, I believe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Congratulations. We've reached that portion of the program where we have public participation. Speakers are limited to two minutes. I think you all know the regulations. Anyone would like to address the board, please come to the podium. I think we have someone approaching it.
This may be one of the last times you do have to hear from me because finally my heart is open, but I did want to thank you. It was really an amazing honor to be able to cut the ribbon. I can't tell you how much that means to me. The integrity that was kept in the building that makes it look like the building that I always loved is amazing. It is... you guys just did an awesome job, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for the opportunity of working for, I think it's eight years now at JFK, which is another amazing school, which now is combining what used to be the Mohar population and the JFK population. I've loved every minute of it, and I just want to thank you for all that you do. We sit here every week, Gary and I, and we're just amazed at your dedication, and thank you. Very touched.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Oh, no, approval of minutes, I'm sorry. Minutes of September fourth, two thousand nineteen. Have a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Are there any comments or corrections? Call the question, all in favor of adopting or approving the minutes of September fourth, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Unanimously approved? Now we have a superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. First, on the superintendent's report, we have a presentation just to say, one of the things that we're going to try to do a little bit this year is really highlight our community partnerships. We talk about them a lot, and you see a lot of different things, but we don't really necessarily have them come, and we're lucky to thank you. We have two kind of of our community partners wrapped into one. Few, maybe a year and a half ago, F. Mann, where'd that go? From C C E, introduced me to Lester, Lester Green, who had this idea, and was timely, and it was... Sorry, Lester Strong, Lester Strong, and Lester had this idea at that time that was timely, that was exactly what we felt we needed, and we jumped on it and were able to go for the last year in different kind of... different settings and different kids, and just most recently this with our summer nine program. So really excited to have Lester here to kind of talk to the board and let you all know what we're doing with the Peaceful Guardians Project. And I think a few weeks ago, or maybe a week ago, I sent you an article where Mr. Strong was highlighted and featured in a New York Times article, and he talked about his work with the Kingston City School District and the Guardians and the Peaceful Guardians. So without me saying anything more, here's Lester Strong.
Good evening. First of all, thank you Superintendent Pedalino and Assistant Superintendent Bonville for allowing us to come and share what we are obviously very excited about in terms of our ability and our opportunity to really engage with young people and police officers here in the city of Kingston. The core mission for the Peaceful Guardians Project is really about creating a communication bridge between groups that really are disconnected in one way or another. Our firm belief, our firm conviction, is that with a little patience, compassion, and hard work, relationships absolutely can be transformed, and that's our commitment to the work that we do. I'd like to share with you three projects that we've been working on with the Kingston City School District that we're enormously both excited and gratified in terms of its outcome. Number one is the Peaceful Guardians Project itself, its core mission. Number two is the summer school effort that we just completed this past summer, and number three is a new initiative called Leadership Kingston. The first one with the Peaceful Guardians Project was launched in January of this year, and we were... its intention was really about building those bridges that I just spoke about between police officers and the youth here in the city of Kingston. Over the past seven months between January and July of this year, we were able to work with seventy-eight police officers, essentially the entire police department, in addition to school resource officers who were also part of that effort, and with eighteen middle school students from both Bailey and Miller, and the outcomes were really extraordinary. Both parties, both the young people and the police officers, said to us that they really had a greater appreciation, a greater grasp for the other person's situation. They were able to see each other in a very different and unique way, and the health of that relationship really grew, and we're excited about the outcomes, and in fact, it's helped us to refine what we will be doing this year. So we believe that we're off to a very good start. We will be... we are actually in the midst of convening our first group for the fall. There will be three groups, fall, winter, spring, totaling forty-five students from Bailey and Middle School, seventh and eighth graders. The incredible difference between what we did in September of last year and this year is that we now have roughly seventy-five youngsters who have expressed interest in the program, and there are only forty-five slots. So it's already gotten attention, it's already gotten a very positive response, and we're excited about the number of students who are really stepping forward and wanting to be a part of the program. The other program that I want to share with you is the summer school program that we did just this past July. We were able to work with fifty sixth and seventh graders from Bailey and Miller School, and what we focused on was social emotional skill development, and we did it through a multidisciplinary team teaching process. We did team teaching on team building and communication. We did one of our other leaders focused on movement and kinesthetic learning, and the third one of us worked on mindfulness and meditation. And in the meditation process, really the kind of constant refrain was about focus and about relaxation, which are the two components that they were able to derive from that experience of the meditation process. Again, the feedback was frankly overwhelmingly supportive, that both teachers and students who were part of that program indicated that it was an extraordinarily beneficial program, and some actually had recommended that it's something that should be considered during the school year. You have in front of you documents that really give very specific feedback from all of the teachers and all of the students who are involved in the program, so you'll be able to do it for yourselves firsthand. And the final program that I want to tell you about is a new initiative, and it's really a shared initiative between the Kingston City School District and the Bruderhoff community, who, again, in talking about building bridges, the interest both for both Kingston schools as well as Bruderhoff is to have a way to get to know each other, one another better. And the effort is going to be called Leadership Kingston. We will be inviting twenty-five tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders to participate in the program. It will have three different dimensions. One is that it will focus on the kind of leadership, social emotional skills that are kind of bedrock to the work that the Peaceful Guardians Project really is a part of. Secondly, it will be an opportunity for these twenty-five young people to really engage in a very in-depth way with leadership in this community in terms of government, in terms of the private sector, and in terms of nonprofits, because the intention of this leadership program is to help these young people understand how they can really make a difference in this community, and for them to give them and to give them the kind of tools and insights that will enable them to do that. And third, the program will be built on field trips. When we talk about politics, we may go to the FDR Library, or if we talk about creativity and the power of creativity, we may go to the Dia Museum in Beacon, or if we're talking about food and food deserts versus the Whole Foods culture, we might go to C I A and really give our young people a firsthand experience with the extraordinary and in many ways iconic institutions that really are right here in our midst. So we're very excited about it. We fully intend for it to be a rich experience. It'll be a year-long experience, school year from September until June of next year. We'll be working with the Bruderhoff, with the Kingston City School District, as well as the Boys and Girls Club, to identify who we believe collectively are the strongest candidates for this work. Again, details of that work is in your packet. We couldn't be more thrilled, and we hope that we can come back to you a year from now and share with you the really positive outcomes that we fully expect from this. So I'll stop here and happy to answer any questions.
You have so many candidates for the slot that you have. How will you make the determination? And will the students who are now accepted this year, if their seventh graders be eligible then next year for the eighth graders?
Answer is yes, absolutely, and that's part of the criteria. For example, probably what we'll do is select eighth graders first because this is their last shot. Secondly, we will absolutely consult with guidance counselors and principals about who, in their judgment, really could benefit from this kind of experience. And thirdly, is the student and parents themselves, because to be a part of this program, you have to give permission. So in order for any person to be a part of this, they have to demonstrate to us that they're really excited and want to be a part of this initiative because it's work. It really is an intensive ten-week program about the social emotional and leadership skill development. It's about really coming together as equals with police officers in very healthy and rich conversations. So those are the criteria.
Ms. Dr. Jacobov?
I'm just... I'm just really grateful for you and for this program. I think it's really... I love the focus on relationships, and I love the focus on community building, and those are the, you know, we strengthen those relationships between our schools and our other institutions, our police and our community. I mean, that's really what's going to help to elevate our students. And I also love that you're not just focused in one area, so you're now looking at middle school through high school, which is a pathway, and I think it's great to be following those kids and working with the kids in that chunk of space, which is, you know, adolescence is not easy, and there it is. So thank you.
Thank you, and again, the wisdom of superintendent, the assistant superintendent saw that vision and saw the wisdom of that kind of extension, and we're excited to be a part of it.
Mrs. Strong?
When do you meet with the students?
We meet with the students for this first round. We will meet with them this afternoon.
Okay, so it's on weekends, not during a school day?
It's on weekends, it's from eleven to one-thirty at the Center for Creative Education.
Mrs. Strong?
I love what you're talking about. I agree with my comrades here, how important it is to have this through middle school and high school. I'm just wondering, the kids who have already participated, whether it be in the summer or the program that you had, do you follow up with any kind of boost, because it seems that you can't be really one and done with this kind of thing?
Great question, great question. In fact, what we are doing is that those who have finished our ten-week program, we now have mentor sessions twice a month, again, at the Center for Creative Education, where we've brought older adults who then come in, we go through kind of group activities, and then they split off to check in with each one of our students, to say, how's it going, you know, what's happening for you, and how can I help, how can I support? So you're exactly right, and our intention is to stay with these youngsters until they graduate from high school.
That's wonderful.
Reverend Childs?
Yeah, I would to congratulate you on bringing this program forth. When you mentioned about doing this, I was wondering how it was going to work, and I've heard nothing but positive comments, you know, relative to it, and I think it's definitely going to make our community better, because when the young people realize, and also the police officers, for example, that, hey, we're all looking for the same thing, and when we understand one another, then we can be more effective in our relationships, and I think it's great what's being done, and we're looking forward to even greater news coming around.
Mr. Spicer?
I also wanted to add the importance, the importance of the mindfulness piece of your program, because it gives our children the skills of pause, especially for adolescents, so that they respond more appropriately and effectively to situations rather than what adolescents do, which is an automatic first response, which is usually ineffective. So thank you for bringing that to our children and working with them on that.
Thank you, and I can't tell you how amazing it was this summer. I do a lot of the work that I do with a singing ball, a Tibetan singing ball, and the work and the ability of these young people to really capture the focus that they needed to stay with the sound of that ball was absolutely incredible, and they want... and they ask for more, which is incredible. So we think we're on to something, and I think that they've given us tremendous insight into what works and what doesn't work for young people, so we're excited about it.
And solely needed, thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to add to the fact that I'm very happy and pleased with all your programs, and I'm sure they'll be a success, and there is a wide... psychiatrists are taking today, the youth today, then they do have their natural need for interaction with adult, and if that adult is the right person, it will be their mentor, and definitely I'm happy with all your work.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I think it's great that you have a... an opportunity for the police officers to be involved in this way with students. It's a way that they might not usually have an opportunity to, and I think the community could really use, can really use that type of interaction between the police and the student body.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you and also Dr. Pedalino and Mrs. Bonville for creating this for us. Thank you.
Next up for the superintendent's report is our second century project for Kingston High School and BBL K S Q.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to start off with some quick updates, and then I'm going to turn it over to Armand at K S Q to give you a brief presentation on the auditorium recital panel. Over at the high school, we have saw cutting on the ground floor for new underground piping at the new bathrooms and then the future nurses area. That continues, that's quite good work. The fire pump was set on the new equipment pads earlier this month. Piping at this new unit is going to start next week. At the end of the month, everything should be done and tested, and that work will be completed. The exterior masonry cleaning is ongoing, it continues in the courtyard areas. They're washing down the brick, they're cutting out the existing mortar joints and putting in new mortar that matches what was there originally, really cleaning up the look in those areas around the whole building, actually. In the stage, the removal of the subfloor, that took place this week. There was a wood floor that was found in the meets, so we took that out. Now they're starting to level off the floor, doing all the pre-work for when the new floor does come later this fall. And then on the stage, they're taking out existing ductwork. There was a steam line that was around the chimney that's up there, so all of that is going on, and a removal of existing light fixtures in the auditorium as well. On the first and second floor, the general works contractor is starting to patch in existing areas where items have been removed, such as where chalkboards have come down or different fixtures and whatnot, getting ahead of the game on that, so contractors can follow through with their work, and they already have all the patching and whatnot completed. On the ground floor, we've started framing in some of the areas where all of the demo is complete, such as the nurses area and a few of the new art rooms. This is a picture of the front of the building, all the trees have been come down, the stumps will come down as well, where you see the orange, that'll take a little bit, but they will come out. Really changes the look without the landscaping. New low shrubbery will be put in. This is the new fire pump and the wheel tank that is also in that room. This is near the music area in the what was the... it was a storage room next to the boiler room. Like I said, continuing with slab cutting on the ground floor, and we also have all the new electrical panel boards, all of that work is complete in the existing electric room. This is in the ground floor hallway, the flooring has been removed, continuing with some of the demo going through that area. And the picture on the right is what will be one of the new art classrooms, continuing with demolition in that area, and they're starting some of their mechanical, electrical, and plumbing rough-in with ductwork and whatnot. Some more ground floor photos and framing in one of the new offices on the ground floor. This is a photo of the stage. Like I said, we're starting to level off the floor, so the new flooring can be put on top of what the existing concrete that's there. And then this is the new doorway into the fire pump room. A portion of the brick was actually infilled yesterday. The floor will be leveled off, and then, like I said, the piping for the new fire pump can take place. We started wall patching, sorry, it was hard to see, it was a little easier on the smaller computer. They've come through in areas where whiteboards and whatnot have been removed, filling in holes and whatnot, and then some more photos of the ground floor demo, taking outdoor frames, some of the ceilings and whatnot. And I'm going to turn it over to Armand. And I'm going to turn it over to Armand.
Thanks, girl. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to give a little bit of background for stakeholders that may be tuning in for the first time to learn about some of the work that's taking place at the KHS Theater. The big substantial projects that are happening there and the work intended to be completed at the end of January 2020 is the air conditioning project, so the basement's happening up in the attic of the theater and the new equipment building is still allowing the space to be air conditioned, so it'll really be a great community space for Kingston, you know, in those shoulder months when it's super hot in the space. Another piece of information that came back to the design team is that the acoustics were sort of not ideal in the theater. And we did bring an acoustician onto the team and they set up equipment on the stage and they collect data. And the report that we got back is that there are a lot, there are a lot of dead spaces in the theater. So, in my own words, what's happening is that, that audio is coming out from the stage and it's getting lost in the walls on the side. And the materials that we're going to talk about this evening are acoustical panels that would be fixed onto the walls of the existing theater, and they're set off the wall so that it doesn't disturb the existing game and other fixtures that are there. And it, and it reflects audio back into the, to the audience. So, the, the product that, that we're recommending is a wooden product, all right? And I have two samples that, that are share of the, so the wood is configured in its striations to create the conditions that allow the, the audio to bounce back or the noise, or the sounds to bounce back to the audience. So it's not an absorptive kind of material, like acoustical panel, or a fabric, but it, but again, it's the configuration of the striations in the wood. So, and there are three types of wood. There's maple and there's walnut, but there's also oak, which is one of the recommendations we're going to make. So I'll ask you to look at this only for its configuration, not for the species, because we don't, I don't have that species. So, so the, the acoustical panel product can be either painted or stained, so it has a natural wood feel to it. And again, the, the concept that we brought forward, so these are, this is an example of a painted gray installation. The concept that we brought forward is to panelize the wood so that it reflects the historic arched windows that were there at the original construction of the building. So that was sort of a clever way to make a historical reference within the space, but not sort of, we don't have the ability to reopen those windows, but to, to make that reflection, we thought was a nice thing to do. So this is probably the more contemporary approach, would be to paint that wood product in a light gray color. I'm going to go to the last option, there's also an option to paint it in the school's maroon color. And if we go to our existing conditions pictures, you'd have that on the seats, on the curtains, the proscenium, and then also on these, you know, heroic arched panels on the sides of the blanket. What, what we learned since the facilities committee meeting that we had last week is that the product does come in an oak configuration. And, and this is the sample stained oak piece that we're using as a matching piece for all the rest of the wood throughout Maine. So, the entrance doors to the theater have this type of product on them, and then where we're having oak reappear or be refurbished or restored, and the rest of Maine is going to match this. It'll match this here. We, the heavy lift for the board is to help us make this decision tonight about which of the three approaches that you're comfortable with. I hope that we didn't bring, I thought we, I think we brought only three viable approaches that, that would work. In the facility committee meeting, I was sort of feeling good about all three, but having done more homework and found, finding out about the oak product, we're feeling like the oak is the way to go. It actually is more historic and in, in keeping with the rest of the language of the building. And I think, you know, would be something that natural wood really broadcasts value, I think. And that, and that sort of feels like the right decision to us. But again, we have three good options and we're happy to discuss all three and get your thoughts on it.
I was just wondering about the maintenance, in terms of, if you went with the natural wood, would that require less maintenance than if you have a painted product that will need repainting?
Well, that's an excellent question. The, the only maintenance that we're aware of is, and when I say periodically, I don't probably mean maybe once a school year, but is some sort of a dusting to see that, depending on the performance of the new mechanical system, which is also filtering dust and particles out of the air, making sure that, it could even be blown, like with a compressor now and then, but I don't, I think in terms of that issue, whether it's paint or natural wood, should be the same, the same sort of maintenance on the product.
One of the things I'd imagine is it's probably a factory applied system to it.
So then it's a very few.
It probably has a clear coat glaze on top.
I see.
And so, it probably isn't going to be any kind of refurbishment in any sense. Probably 10, 15 years maybe.
So strictly just the physical and local?
Right.
So it's the cosmetic that you're, you're really asking?
Correct. And, and I would echo what Mr. Clapper just said, that this is all selected and installed in the factory, so it's coming, you know, cured and coated and ready to be, to be installed.
Reverend Chaut?
I like the natural oak, I really think that it gives a rich flavor to it. I was leaning originally with the gray, but I changed my mind, I like the natural oak.
And, and when I was, was sharing the oak, I'm sorry, the wood product last week, it was a maple, which didn't feel right to me, that's sort of a gem, like glory, kind of a language. But this felt like it falls into place with the rest of the character. And also, the school's maroon color is very, it chases through the center of the space, so it's the seating and the curtains and the proscenium. And I think that then like to put it on the sides is a lot.
Mr. Michael?
As a material decorator, no, I just made it up. But I, I agree with Mr. Chow, the first choice was the gray color with the oak stain, the, you know, gray. I feel we give more contrast to the whole room, because you've got enough maroon color, you have enough dark, you know, wood color there. So I think it would suit more perfectly than. So it's just, that's my opinion, I'm not a material decorator. So I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
I just want, you had mentioned the seats, they are going to be cushioned though, and then there's going to be wood?
Seats removed. The seats were replaced.
Yeah, the seats are the existing seats. They're cushioned, they have a metal back and they have a wooden on them.
But you said they would ma- match the wood?
I'm sorry, I was just sharing that the maroon color is predominant in the space in the seating.
Right.
And then again, in the curtains.
She's asking about the wood. So, so throughout the building, there's oak doors.
Right.
So, so what we're trying to do is match that wood pattern, not only inside the theater, but as you come, as you enter the building, the doors that you see going into the auditorium are oak. And then you come in and the old panels will match that as you go into the auditorium. And, and the new doors around, in the construction are also in an oak tone.
What do you mean, they match the seats?
One of the things about oak and this color, you know, it's also a common, it's, it's not only rich and makes you feel like, wow, this, this place has some elegance to it, but it also, natural wood, that kind of earthy tone is a common factor also.
So, my initial thought also was the gray, because this looks very yellow to me. But when you, but when you pass around that, it's not very yellow, which I like better. So I'm okay with going with the oak, because at first this picture was like too yellow, but that's not what you showed us.
And to be transparent, we were, we didn't realize that it came in the oak when we initially, so this was reflecting the maple, and that's why you're, you're seeing that nuance, for sure.
Right. What you showed us is much more, is much, is more subtle, and I like that.
This is totally a separate question, what is the stage four going to be when it's done?
It's plain floor, but it's going to be painted black, and that was at the request of the.
The theater, the theater.
All stages seem that of the.
Yes.
Then this is not, do we have to discuss, do you want to finish the wall covering? Because I have other questions.
We want to, we would like a decision on this.
Right, so then.
On this piece, so we can move forward, we have to order the product and we have lead time, so we want to, we want to get this. This is why Armand's brought up.
I like the oak, because I think gray is kind of, this period of time, everything is gray, everybody paints their house gray and the interiors are all gray. But in 10 years, it might be another, it'll go back to beige. But it will never go away from oak. Oak has been time-tested, it's been around for as long as we've been on this continent, and I kind of like the oak.
And I'm a person of the get-go, I think that it's timeless and it's beautiful, so I'm, I'm, I would like, with that, please.
Sting.
Dr. Peddler, are you looking for a motion?
Was she covered in wood?
Right.
I think it would be great to have a motion, Mr. Spicer.
Then I move that we go with the oak.
I second that emotion.
Discussion?
I very much like the oak.
There's a motion on.
Yes, I know.
And a second.
Not a second, so I'll have to do it.
If there's no more discussion, we'll vote. All in favor of oak, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the oak? I think it's a unanimous decision.
Thanks so much for voting against us, because we wanted to share the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have another question. Are you going to be doing the makeup room and the dressing room that is to the stage left?
The only thing I believe we're doing in that area is just repainting the floor inside of those rooms. We're not changing the configuration or anything of the dressing rooms and whatnot.
Can you put a few more pipes across so they can hang more things, is that, do we have a little room for that, Mr. Clapp?
We can do that.
Oh, that would be great.
Take the old steam pipes out of the way, that destroys valuable.
It would be perfect, it would be perfect. Like a little shelf with a pipe under it.
Just as we conclude, I just wanted to share that we're working with Tom and others to think about the whole experience from going up the refurbished steps through the doors. We've already restored the skylight and, and then, you know, to really think your way into the theater and what that, what that experience is like. We have, you know, the budget to, to touch up each thing and make sure that it's just right, and, and we're, we're really focused on that, excited to sort of deliver that later this year in January.
And there will be railings on the, on the side stairs of some type of.
Going on the walls, yep.
Yeah.
So I'd just like to comment, I think this, the seating were, was replaced as part of the Excel project, maybe in 2009 or 2010, 2008? Okay. So, hopefully that has a long life left.
It's holding up well.
So I'm, we're going to use rails for the steps, right? Because now we don't have any.
No, they'll be there.
They'll be there, the rails and the steps?
On the walls.
On the side, okay.
I have a question about the fire pump, if I could go back to that. So what is the capacity of that pump?
There's, off the top of my head, I, I would say somewhere in the 10,000 kilo minute range. It is all calculated by fire engineers, fire protection engineers, and they, they take into consideration every head going off at one time in the building. We've had the Kingston Water Department test flow in the area through the piping several times on both streets in our new main to see how much water that's available. And so all of that goes into a calculation and that's what the pump is, is made to do. And I'm sure there's a safety factor, so if the number is 6,000 gallons a minute, it's probably pumping 7,500 gallons a minute.
And so that distributes water to every part of the new buil- of?
Correct.
Of all the buildings? Is that right?
No, no.
Just Maine?
So, so we have, we have a fire pump at the fieldhouse, we have a fire pump at the new Salzman building, and we have a new fire pump. All three are brand new from, well, as new as the construction of those buildings. And then they're, they were all, again, designed by a fire protection engineer to, to supply every head in the building. They're right, exactly.
And the sprinklers as well?
Correct. And we also, you also have to realize that the fire department's right across the street, and the response time is incredibly fast. We've had some mishaps with the alarms and they're there probably before we get to the panel. So not only do we have this, but it's also code provisions for sign these connections where they have pumper coks to it and all that. So it is a well-designed safety feature of the building.
And this is the same exact pump that we just put in at the last phase in Salzman, the exact same.
I think that's good to know. Our investment is protected from fire damage, at least.
As well as our students.
Yes. Well, they're, they're an investment. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to take full responsibility for the warmth in this room. In an effort to be green, we, we go into unoccupied, thank you, whoever's doing that. We, we, we go into unoccupied mode in this building every night. So this room, we went to unoccupied and I didn't reset the schedule, so I'll take responsibility for that. I was on a charge today to bring to you a report about the maintenance and residual activities of the year. We've done work in every building, but I will say the main focus for us this year has been Mahar and the moving of Seoni over the summer. We, we expended probably well over 60% of my labor force here and over at Seoni. The project scope for the contractors in this building was primarily the office spaces, all the classroom spaces, cafeteria, kitchen, storage areas, we're all on the maintenance department. I'm very proud of my guys, they painted all the rooms, they put flooring in all the spaces. We've built closets, I can't tell you the amount of work that we've done, the kitchen was completely redone by our guys, new electric running those areas. IT department with Adam, the help of Adam Redder, put in all the security cameras, outside lighting, all was done in-house, above and beyond the contract. So as, as, as you see in many years, we do a lot of work in all the schools, we still did work in other schools, but we, our, our focus was, was here this, for this summer. Couple of the other things that we did here, we installed the generator outside that supports the entire IT operation and, and the heating and the cooling of the building, if it's in occupied mode, not unoccupied. We removed the oil tank to accommodate, accommodate that. One of the areas of the IT area did not, there was an existing air conditioning unit that we thought we could reuse, it proved that it was imprudent to repair it, so our maintenance staff installed a brand-new air conditioning unit in that space. We renovated the entire kitchen and brought stuff over, it was all different voltage, we had to run all new electric in the kitchen, cleaned up the floor and did the storage room, the kitchens, we renovated. Exterior lighting, like I said, there was a playground company that came in and installed the playground, we assisted with all the landscaping out there and worked with those folks. And of course, we moved everything that was at Crown over here, inclusive of 150 file cabinets, maybe more. So it, it was, it was a monumental task to, to do that. Elsewhere in the district, obviously, we're supporting the Second Century Project of the high school. We moved all the classrooms out of Maine over to Tobin and Winston so that they would have their, have spaces. We created a temporary nurse space over in Tobin, which was in operation the day after school, because what happens over summer, students come in and get their sports physicals and it's a very active place in the summertime. And we, we were able to accommodate, create that space, which happened to be a couple of the special ed rooms, not a nurse's office at all, and we, we had to install sinks, replace floors, build petitions for sick days and all those things prior to school ending. And then as, as the students came in, we were able to accommodate them walking by the construction area, they had to go right past the construction area to get to it. We moved the athletic director, obviously, we, we support daily with turning on valves, finding breakers for the contractors, those types of things. And through that all, we maintain a sanitary condition at the high school for our students and staff. This is just general numbers. I people love numbers. We have two guys, Wes Bassett and we have a new person out at the field and I cannot remember his name for life, Jimmy Mack. And two people put together 137 games. They mow those fields. They not only have Bruner and all of the fields around Miller, they do fields at Chambers. We do fields at Orlando Street. We have fields down at the Kingston Plaza and those two folks manage all of that. And to put that in perspective, anybody that's ever been up to Sargerties and Cantine Field, Cantine Field probably has 15 to 20 workers maintaining their fields and we have two guys that do ours. We have a small engine person, one person, Nick Bishop. There's 124 pieces of equipment. That's plows, snow plows, lawn mowers, wheat whackers, things like that. Manny is our auto mechanic, 35 vehicles. Tom Longendike does distribution with Robert Leonardo. We take in all the teachers' orders, verify the order and then give them to the teacher. Plus, we deliver everything, all the logistics to the district. Anything that needs to be delivered, we deliver. And just again, in some numbers, in summer cleanings, just some random numbers, not all of what they do, but the cleaners in this district are cleaning a billion square feet of building. Every year, every surface gets touched, every window, every floor, every door, every doorknob, every toilet, sink, you name it, it gets touched and cleaned, blinds. And again, monumental task. This summer was sort of a short summer, but it happens every summer. It happens every summer in five to six weeks. And several of our buildings have summer school and it still gets done in those buildings. The print shop, I put 19,000, 1.9 million copies. That's a little, that was just the one machine. That's the production machine. She has two other machines and she told me the day after I had sent this to Carly that she was upward of 3 million copies this year that she produced. And that's not the copiers that are in the buildings to do the ancillary work. And in just general work orders, we have a work order program called Footprints. 1,950 general work orders were completed and that's draining stops, light bulbs, out of those types of things. Right now, from our footprint program, we have, we've completed in the last 12 months, 1,968. That was updated a day after. And open work orders are 126. By location, you can see that some schools get a little bit more up. The last column that's not named is actually the warehouse. And so, if you put in and you don't identify a school, it defaults to the warehouse. So, we're not doing all that work at the warehouse. That work is being done throughout the district. This is the crew. And they're standing in front of our brand-new Kate's backup. Thank you, Mr. Olson, for a great purchase there. We use that three to four times a week. It was used here just the last week to clear out the backfield and the old playground in the backfield. And the picture on the left is the crew that moved all this wonderful furniture from Seoni to this building. And I'm proud of each and every one of those folks.
Mrs. Scher?
I would like to say, and I know my colleagues would agree, that you are and your crew are due, congratulations and sincere thanks because of the Herculean task we gave you this year to close out one building, open another, at the same time that you were doing all these other things. So, I thank you and I know they will probably want to thank you individually as well.
I'd also like to say, and I appreciate that and I know my men do too. And actually, the CSEA president is here tonight and he's very active with the cleaning crew and he works with every school to make sure everything gets cleaned. In a perfect world, we did a five-year report and all the items that needed to be fixed across the district totaled over $80 million. And we had $16 million to do the work for this five-year period. In a perfect world, we would get the $8 million and everything would be perfect and it's always a work in progress. We take care of all the health and safety issues first and then we go to the cosmetic issues and we prioritize fairly well. And I know some things may fall through the cracks, but everybody in our department works diligently to make sure that every, everyone that crosses our thresholds, the supporting community, the students and the staff are in a sanitary condition and a safe condition.
You do great work, the team. We really appreciate it. And I can't figure out how you find time to golf.
Well, interestingly enough, as I digress from this, I've only got a few times this summer because not only did I do this, I also had the pleasure of renovating my own house. I'm moving back into my childhood home in four days, by the way, and Sunday we're moving. And since April, every waking hour other than here, I've been working on my house to get it.
I just want to echo the thanks that have been given. I think you do a tremendous job and it would be enough on its own. And then, we add the high school and here and nothing really fell by the wayside. And I think that speaks a lot to you and your work ethic and your ability to really manage that team of excellent people you have working with you and I'm really grateful for that.
Mr. Spicer?
I've been to facilities meetings and also board meetings and I really do enjoy, and I think we all enjoy, your ability to explain detailed, complicated construction details with the board so that we all understand because most of us are not in construction. But you explain everything so well and help us to understand the progress that you're making. And also, all the tours you took us on to show us all the things that you're getting done. Very, very much appreciated, very effective. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you and the department. I think you do a wonderful job and I think we can be, all be proud of the buildings that we have.
If you can clip your mic.
Okay, next in the superintendent's report is superintendent. I'm staying in the theme of buildings and grounds and capital projects. One of the goals set forth for this year was to look at a revisioning of our five-year capital plan. As you know, earlier in the summer, we put out our five-year capital plan to bid and the $16 million that we thought would do a certain amount of work three years ago, two and a half years ago, when it was voted on by the voters, doesn't do that kind of work anymore. You know, even with the escalation that we built in, was not what we expected and we all know what's going on in the construction and materials and building materials market right now. So, we do have the approval of the voters, spend $16 million and we do have buildings that need more work. We know it's a constant thing. We've done over $200 million worth of work in the Kingston City School District over the last seven and a half years. And that's inclusive of a major project, the Kingston High School, so this is part of that. So, we know we have things we have to do. So, we had some choices to make. We could take that $16 million and put a little bit into the three schools that we decided to focus on and then come back in May and hope to do it again. Or we could focus, reduce our scope, focus on two schools and do everything that we talked about doing that's needed in those buildings. Now, I'm not saying we're going to do everything that's needed in these buildings, but we're going to do the things that are on the five-year plan that are prioritized, that's health and safety and maintenance issues. So, we're going to just quickly go through this. You've seen this before, to be honest with you. This is the same presentation we gave, I've eliminated one of the schools. So, what we've decided to do is to work on Miller Middle School and John F. Kennedy Elementary School. So, instead of doing a little bit in these schools, we are going to do everything that we put out in the scope. The one thing I really want to point out here, because you're going to read this and I know someone's going to ask, so I'm going to answer this question first here in the second bullet, it says, "Select window replacements." It says, "In both of those." We are not doing select window replacements. We are doing all window replacements. So, that is one of the changes that combining these, you know, reducing this project will change. Again, but the things we're looking at, if you look, site improvements, including walkways, asphalt, back parking lot at Miller, a lot of people have questions about that. We're doing that. Curbing at Miller, falling apart, having some issues there, we're doing that. Looking at the lighting, looking at all the electrical panels, emergency exits and those kind of things will all be touched up at Miller. Big thing at JFK is an ADA, is looking at ADA. ADA compliance, getting into the building, putting an elevator into the building. Windows, again, not selecting, we're doing all of the windows. So, really, again, we talked about this in the spring. We're doing exactly what we said we were going to do, only we reduced it to just doing two buildings instead of three. Everybody likes to talk about the auditorium. We spent a lot of time, a lot of time, talking about Kingston High School's auditorium. So, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about Miller's auditorium. We are, one of the things that was really frustrating in the last process going through the bidding is we weren't able to do this in that process. This was one of those things we had to kind of put out as an ad alternate because it wasn't really focused on the safety and health issues that we want to address. But now we can. So, we are looking at replacing the seating, 599 seats, we all know. It's probably not really 599, that's the capacity, but we all know there are empty spots where seats used to be. So, it's probably not actually a 599 capacity. House lighting upgrades. Acoustical evaluation's been done, just like at the high school. We'll make improvements there. Floor finish upgrades, painting upgrades, upgrades of the control booth so it can actually be used for the lighting and the sound control. Just some quick pictures. This is the current state of Bailey, of Miller, I should say, I'm sorry. But all of you know that you've been there. Most people here in the audience have sat in something, did something at Miller Middle School. Again, these are just some looks at the upgrades. A little computer-generated addition of what we'll be seeing there, changing the lighting. You see, we talked about... Not sure if that was me or you. The acoustical panels, changing the acoustics in the back, so we're looking at making some differences here. So, for better sound, better quality for both the musicians and the audience. Different lighting, kind of like that. A control panel in the back that actually is modern, 21st century, that can work for our performances there in our classes. This is a look at the outside of Miller Middle School. You see the current windows. Actually, I like this picture because you can actually see this one here that actually has already fallen out, that we had to put something over it. This will be the new look of the front of Miller Middle School. John F. Kennedy Elementary School, again, same era, kind of look at the design with the windows and the panels and the window curtain, as we like to call it. This will be the new look at John F. Kennedy. So, again, the voters have given us approval to spend $16 million. We don't, we put our estimates out there. We figure we're going to spend around $7.9 million at Miller Middle School and $8.1 at JFK. Some of the drivers around JFK are things like an elevator, that's an extremely expensive item. So, we are going to put this back out on the street. We're going to put bids out in early October, expecting to come back to the board with bids for the board to accept for the first week in November and then expecting to get shovels in the ground and moving as soon as we can. We already have, we already have State Education Department approval for these projects because we've gone through this whole process. So, once we get our bids out, we get, when we get the board to approve them, we're going to move. Questions?
I noticed on the first picture and the second picture, I thought the doors were already replaced and it looks like, are you replacing doors again at Miller?
Here?
Yeah.
These doors? Yeah, it's, yeah, those doors are new. They're right there, yeah. We are actually, not to get off on a tangent, but we are actually right now looking at and will be engaging KSQ in this. We're looking at part of our Safe Schools bond to look at the option of putting mantrap-type entranceways in every one of our school buildings. So, we're looking, trying to, we're going to, that's probably dues to Armin, who's wondering what that's all about, but we're hoping to design that and take a look and see what we do there. So, there could even be a change from that.
Okay.
Mrs. Jordan?
I just want to thank Dr. Pedalino for his leadership in accommodating two good projects rather than trying to, you know, have unfinished space that was still going to be of great need. And I also want to thank the Facilities Committee because this has been an ongoing project and I know with our architects and our BBL, everybody's worked hard to try to come up with things. But for the people, I know that there are so many people who watch this live, but after they talk about it, I just think that people might think we're only doing the windows because they're old-fashioned and cosmetically, but we're not. It's so necessary for safety and health issues and I just want the public to understand that. That kind of outlay of funds is really not optional at this point. We're just very fortunate that we haven't had, you know, some kind of problem because of it, pooh-pooh-pooh. But I think that it's much better to do two buildings well and then hopefully be able to do the other buildings. But I'd also like to thank the staff and administrators who are waiting because I know it's very frustrating when you thought that you were going to get all these repairs done and you still have to wait until we have funding again. And so, I just want to extend my thanks to all the staff and the students who are still having to accommodate these needs.
Just to add on this, we will be coming back in May to the community for Edson and probably we have our five-year facilities review this year again, so we'll probably be looking to package some other things in there together. We have money in our capital reserves. We can leverage that with our state aid and we can continue what we started about five years ago when I said we were going to continue this, this process of just improving things and really keeping up with things so things, so we don't end up with windows at Miller, you know, that are 50, 60 years old and need to be replaced immediately. So, we're going to continue that process and I think that's about good budgeting, that's about good planning. And again, that's about good work with the Facilities Committee and making sure that we are just constantly not, it's very easy at budget time for us to say, "Okay, defer maintenance." But it, you know, it comes back on and we all know that.
I noticed JFK, so the first one, the air conditioners are like that. The second one, are they air conditioners?
No, those aren't air conditioners at this point. Those are just kind of spacers that we put in there.
So, are you putting air conditioners?
We are going to look to, we're looking to create panels that can be removed so we can put air conditioners in. You know, there's, you see that we have air conditioners here, here and all the way down line. So, we're going to work to see what we can do as far as creating that opportunity, yeah.
More inside though, not looking like that.
Well, that's a little more work we have to do with our architectural team. You know, we all know and we're experiencing it right now, that air conditions become an issue within, our buildings aren't air-conditioned for the most part. New construction, our overall new construction is air-conditioned. This is actually probably the worst way to air-condition this school. It's not safe, it's not efficient, nobody knows how to fix these things, it's not, and our buildings, this is the one piece that people don't know, our buildings are not wired to handle that. So, we start putting air conditioners in every window, portable air conditioner in every classroom and all of a sudden, we have no power at all. So, it really doesn't matter if we have the air conditioner hanging out of the window. So, these are, these are things, and we've talked about this at Facilities, this is a big topic to discuss, the air conditioning situation. But as we move forward, as we build new, you know, as we build new and do renovations, we will be putting in air conditioning in new spaces. But I think, you know, looking at the best way to accommodate the needs that were there in JFK, we're working through that. I think that's kind of, one of the plans was to look at some removable panels that would be working, that would work for areas we need air conditioning.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Can you go back to the auditorium for a minute? The new picture? Yeah, stay there. There, you're saying 599, but that front row on the sides had to be taken out because of the grand piano that was purchased and the risers. So, you may, that front row on the two sides may not exist.
Well, we're going to have, I'll have to discuss that with the architects as far as they look. And also, you look, you see, the front row has these empty seats and those are ADA compliances.
Yes.
Right, so we have to have that in some form. But I'll have to look at what that square footage is from here to there.
Mrs. Scher?
I would like to say thank you to the administration for being visionary and staying on top of big projects to renovate effectively. And to the public also for giving us permission to use our reserves so that we can address these because we know owning a home... Because we know owning a home, there's always something going wrong or needing attention. Only these buildings, which are hundreds of thousands of square feet larger than a home, and many of them, of course, there are going to be things that maybe are deferred for a while and things that need to be bundled into bigger projects as well. And so that we can make more effective use of our reserves. So that's, you know, something that I was thinking of public for allowing us to do.
I have a question. What is the timeframe for these? I know it'll be summer work, but how many, will it all be done in one summer or two summers or?
It depends. That's usually the question around construction. We're expecting and hoping to, at least, so let's just talk about the auditorium for a second because that's something we talked about at length the other day. We're expecting to take that offline right at the end of the year and be ready to put it back online probably September of the next year. As far as getting everything else done, when we're looking at paving and those kinds, those have to be done during the summer before the buses roll. So I'm assuming this is going to be a 12 to 18-month process of building and renovation. But I'll ask, Armand, would you agree or Carly? So we're looking at about 12 to 18 months to start to finish.
Okay, so it'll go into 2021?
Correct.
Thank you for pulling back the bids on the three buildings and repackaging them. I think it's a much better project this way.
Like I said, we could have went forward, but I think that none of us would have been satisfied with the piecemeal approach to this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have one other topic to bring up that is not on the agenda, but I think it's a topic the board would like to discuss. And that is the intermunicipal agreement on Deed Stadium with the City of Kingston. You have, the board has copies of this agreement in their board packet. And it's a discussion, obviously, we've been having for a great deal of time. Big, many changes from the original discussion. But I would like to kind of open up the table for board discussion in public at this time about Deed Stadium and the proposed intermunicipal agreement.
If I could start, most of you know that in May of 2018, there was a referendum and the voters approved for the board to dispose of our share of Deed Stadium according to board approval. And the reason for that was that the city needed complete ownership of the stadium in order to use the funds that they had been granted by the state. And it turned out that that wasn't really the case, that we didn't have to give up ownership. We had to give up, we had to give the city complete management and capital control of Deed Stadium. Which if we had given up ownership, we obviously would have given up that control anyway. But at least for me, I thought there was long-term advantages, and I don't know what they might be, to maintain an ownership position. Because it always seems to me to be better to be an owner than a renter in something like this. It's really the premier athletic facility in the district. It's also important to the city. But the intermunicipal agreement that was agreed upon, that's before us now, gives priority to the school district, which we've had all along in terms of scheduling. The agreement calls for us to make an annual payment for upkeep and maintenance of $95,000 a year, which is approximately what we expend now as our share of Deed Stadium maintenance for the Deed Stadium Commission. And we also, the school district agrees to fund 50% of all locally funded capital design and construction costs incurred by the City of Kingston through the end of this agreement. This agreement, the first agreement is for five years and it's renewable indefinitely at five-year periods unless terminated by either party. It also dissolves the Deed Stadium Commission as part of giving management control to the city. In terms of the 50% local funding for capital design and construction costs, that's, that has been our practice in the last 30 years since we acquired our half-interest in ownership. And this is actually beneficial to the city because if they had complete ownership and had to pay complete capital costs, that would be all on the taxpayers of the city. Now, with this agreement, part of it would be spread to other municipalities in the school district. And I think that's fair because every student and municipality within the school district benefits from the use of Deed Stadium. And so I think, I think it's a fair agreement to both the district and to the city. And I think it's workable. In terms of day-to-day operation, it won't really be much different than what it would be if we had given up ownership. And I think another provision, is this provision still in here? That we, that we have two seats on the Parks and Recreation Commission of the city. So even though we're giving up complete control to the city, we're going to have two people on the commission to add input to whatever decisions are made. So I'm very happy with it. I don't know how other board members feel.
Mr. Michael?
Yes. I served on the Deed Stadium Committee for the last seven years. And on the outset, I was very much against the ceding our ownership to the City of Kingston. But as the time progresses and we came up to this agreement today that I believe we're about to vote on a resolution, I'm very pleased that the agreement is sorted for five years intervals, where it gives us the option to walk our way, you know, and let the city know after four years, that deal doesn't work, that the city doesn't provide all the agreements and the provisions in the contract. So we can walk our way and go back to square one where we stand today. So I'm in favor of this agreement today. And I believe it's a win-win situation for the district and the City of Kingston and as a community as a whole.
Mr. Lamb?
I think this agreement was the best that we could absolutely have reached. And I think it's advantageous to the district more than it is the city. I think it's a very fair agreement for us.
Definitely. Dr. Jakobowitz?
I'm very pleased with this. I know it's been a long time coming and a lot of negotiations. And I really appreciate Dr. Padalino's work and that. And I know Mr. Shaughnessy, you have been very focused on this as well. So I think this is a, I'm very pleased with this. We don't have to give up our ownership. It's renewable every five years so that we can really think about whether this is working for us. We maintain priority in scheduling. And I'm very pleased with this. So thank you for all the work that went into it.
Thank you. Mrs. Shear?
I do agree, as Mr. Michael said, it is a win-win. So we have a revert clause. And should either one of us be upset with the way the agreement is actually implemented, in four years, we can reestablish the Stadium Commission and go back to the way things are now. But this is the best that we could have worked out. And thank you very much, both of you.
I'd like to thank Dr. Padalino for really bringing this about and following up with Mayor Noble on many occasions. And also thank Mayor Noble for being willing to renegotiate the original terms of what we were told we had to do. Reverend Chow, do you have a comment?
Again, I think it's a great agreement. As has already been said, the best that we can do. And the stadium's going to be repaired and a lot of work's going to be done. So it's going to be a better asset as we go forward. So I think it's a good agreement, I'm in favor.
Mr. Spicer?
Just want to take a second to applaud the process. Because watching how this whole negotiation took place and all of our concerns being built into negotiations and Dr. Padalino and Mayor Noble's hard work, really taking into account all the details that we discussed and wanted into the agreement, makes it easy for the board to say, we like the agreement because everything we wanted, everything we talked about is in it. So I just want to say thank you.
Want to say something?
I think it's, I just, I do think it's important to recognize that we have been, the City of Kingston has been a great partner with the school district, Kingston City School District, for my seven and a half years here, even through two administrations. You know, we've worked together to build playgrounds at JFK. We've worked together to provide transportation from Kingston High School to Deed Stadium for, for sports practices at a very, you know, a reduced cost. You know, the Miller Science Fair last year, for no reason at all, other than just he wanted to, the mayor provided two buses to bring people out to the Miller Science Fair. You know, so different things that we've worked. We've always had a very collaborative and cooperative relationship. And I think that the goal of this whole thing was an improved Deed Stadium, which has become, which was once the venue in, you know, in, I'll say, I'll say more than just, you know, Ulster County, but it was really the place, right? If you played football in high school through the '70s and '80s, if you got to Deed Stadium, that meant something. To becoming a place that lost those playoffs to more, to new improved fields in Newburgh and Middletown and even, you know, north of us. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity. It's a win-win situation. The Deed Stadium, bring it back to what it, what it needs to be for our community. And again, the mayor, I know the mayor and I, even when we were working through this, we both had the same goal. Goal was to create the best facility we could for the community. And that's us and that's the kids that use it most of the time. So we're excited this is going to happen now.
Any other comments? I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to consider Resolution 2019 BoE 20. So we'll... And that resolution, I will read, be resolved that the board president is hereby authorized to execute an intermunicipal agreement pursuant to Article 5G of the General Municipal Law between the Kingston City School District and the City of Kingston for the purpose of the school district transferring management and capital control of Deed Stadium to the city and the city providing guarantees to the school district regarding its first priority use of Deed Stadium as presented to the board at this meeting. A copy of such intermunicipal agreement is incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. The comment I'll make is that we're, we will vote first on this agreement. It's been presented to the Finance Committee of the Common Council by Mayor Noble. My understanding is that they're all in agreement with it. And it will be brought to Common Council to the floor at their October 1st meeting. And after that, we'll sign the agreement and be off to the races. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor of the resolution? Please say aye. All aye. Opposed? I think it's unanimous. And again, thank you to Dr. Padalino and our attorneys and to Mayor Noble for...
That was a lot of work.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll go on with the rest of the agenda. And I think that that brings us to the consent agenda. Let me pull my agenda out here somewhere. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We're now to the, we're to the Board of Education portion of the agenda. So the first item is BoE 19, the BoE Goals, the Board of Education Goals, which we introduced, discussed at the last meeting. And we deferred action on it to this meeting. And it's been in the agenda. So is there a motion to accept the board goals for 2019-2020?
So...
Second, Mrs. Shear? Any discussion? I will, I think I said at last meeting, and I will say it again, that we had a subcommittee of the board. It was Mrs. Shear, Dr. Jakobowitz, Mr. Spicer, and myself. We met three times, I believe. Dr. Jakobowitz was chair and did at least two drafts of the board goals and distributed it to all of us and also to the board last week or two weeks ago. And I think they're a good set of goals. Okay. Any other comments? I'll call the question. All in favor of the BoE 19, BoE Goals? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then we go to the Facilities Committee. That's the next item on the Board of Education. Mrs. Shear?
Thank you. So we just came out in 10:11, so we're here, we're pushing the boardroom. It was wonderful experience, it's a very large meeting. So we even had more people than we could have tabled. It was announced that a letter went out to the principals requesting their input for requests, requests of repairs this year. And we circulated calendars for both October and November. A schedule's been generated and will be available for distribution on October 8th meeting of the Facilities Committee. And I already have received four out of the 11 facilities reports from the principals. So I want to thank them for their cooperation. Mr. Palima and Mrs. Shaughnessy went over the five-year capital improvement plan and some changes and updates, they were reviewing it for Dr. Padalino to actually present this evening. The work that was completed in this year was requested from Mr. Klepper, was unable to make it to that meeting. We're hoping to have a spring referendum for the school, the Edson School work. And we talked a bit about the work at George Washington that was identified in the last few years and has photographs and elevation drawings, everything that's already been done and submitted. And we do have them available in Dr. Padalino's office. They originally were submitted in the summer. The next five-year capital improvement plan we'll be discussing during the course of the year. What we're going to do after the Miller and JFK improvements. And Mr. Shaughnessy asked that a draft charter be generated for the Facilities Committee because every, he felt every board committee should actually have a charter. Teaching and learning already does, as governed by policy, as does the finance committee. There is no policy governing facilities other than, there are two on the books. One is the naming of facilities and the other one has to do with construction safety while there are capital projects going on. And we do observe both of those. But I have drawn up a draft. It'll be sent to certainly officers of the board and the Facilities Committee. and the Facilities Committee Charter Group. That's going to be meeting on October 8th at 2:00 PM prior to the Steering and Facilities Committee meetings that day. So that's what I have to, we've had a lot of facilities report in the museum. So that's what I have to report.
And we had, we had a discussion about the panels, the color of the panels-
And we did have a discussion about the colors of the panels. And the people who signed up for the tours of the buildings and actually taking notes were very generous with their time. We had enough people and enough teams to fill up probably twice the seats that we needed. So I want to thank you all for that. And anybody else who's here who also signed up. And we'll have representatives from both the architectural firm and construction management firm with us as well as Mr. Klepper on the tours and from the Safety Committee, Safety Committee. So.
Thank you.
That's what I have to report. Our next meeting is Monday, October 8th.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Teaching and Learning Committee.
We're envious that the Facilities Committee gets to discuss fun things like panels and colors. We met a few weeks ago, the Teaching and Learning Committee. The first order of business was to revise the Teaching and Learning Committee Charter, which you have in your, in your library, I guess. The original charter had really been focused on the transition, which is where the TNL Committee originated. The idea for it was really a focus on how we were going to move, moving closer schools, moving to fifth grade into middle school and reconfiguring, reconfiguring elementary schools and making sure the educational programming that we were envisioning at that time was on track and was being implemented. But now that we're past that and we're, have been living that for so many years, we changed and revised the charter to include the equity focus that has really been the focus of the district for the last few years and something that really is highlighted in the board goals, but also in those different goals. So when you look at the new charter, the focus really is, and the responsibilities of the TNL team really are focused on that equity piece that we have been talking about together for so long. So do I move that?
You can move it, yes.
So can I without a, okay. So I'd like to move that the new charter be adopted.
Some would.
So I have a second?
Second, discussion? I'd like to thank Dr. Jakobowitz for the work that she put into it. And I will say, at the last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, I was very excited at the discussion about the summer programs throughout the district schools. And I believe it was 600 students who participated and many community organizations. And a lot of the focus was on social, emotional learning. And of course, we had the presentation by Mr. Strong and that was part of the summer program, I believe. And it just seemed like the district is making a lot of progress in that area. So.
So it's been all in favor?
All in favor of the-
Is this comment time?
Comment, yes.
I sit, being part of the committee, not just sitting in. I was very impressed by Dr. Jakobowitz's leadership and also the granular detail. The public doesn't know, the granular detail that committee goes into looking at test scores and projections for our, for our children was amazing. And a firm pillar to stand on when we move forward in trying to implement change and improvement. I was very much impressed. Outstanding meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for being a part of it.
Well, thank you.
Other comments or any other discussion on the charter revision? Call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously adopted. Thank you, Dr. Jakobowitz.
Do you want me to go through the rest of the report?
Sure.
So I just want to highlight something that Mr. Spicer just said, which is that we have a, we have a great team. And it's a great TNL administrative team and a great board team. And those meetings are very rich and pretty exciting. So I would agree with you on that. So we did look at end of year academic data. This year, this time around, we looked not only at grade level, not grade level, but also growth scores. We've provided an additional picture, which was really nice to see. We're seeing some improvement in our kindergarten ELA scores. And in the past year or two, we've had a special push-in program in all of our kindergartens. So we've expanded that now to all of our first grades and some second grades. We're hoping maybe to even go into third grade, I mean, all second grades at some point. That looks like it's really having an impact. Data from grades three and four are showing a need for additional focus. It makes sense when you think about ELA. That's really when you start to move from the decoding to really comprehension becomes even more important. So we need some extra support. So the team is thinking about that. We have seen some improvement in elementary math, but we're seeing lower growth than we think we should be seeing. So that's something that the team is thinking about. And then overall, the data really show that the, that we need to have a focus on the middle level. And I know that the hope is that, and the expectation is that the support that we're giving up, the lower elementary grades will move up. But in the meantime, we do need to support our, our middle level in math and ELA. And to that end, we are deploying instructional coaches differently this year to provide some extra added support at the middle level. We talked about a new schedule, data reporting to the board, just to streamline it so it doesn't get too cumbersome when we're not overloaded with data. And then we had a great conversation about the summer school program, which Mr. Shaughnessy also referenced. So yes, it was, it was a little bit different this year. We had longer days for a fewer number of weeks, which fit better with family schedules and allowed us to, I think, have better attendance than we had seen in the past. It was 600 kids that we reached. Focus on literacy for elementary, restorative justice, SEL, working with community partners. And then for summer nine, we had 43 students. And what's really impressive is for math, ELA, and Spanish, we had between 86 and 89, 88% of our kids passing and 100% for French. Kids also got-
Can I just add that those were special classes that we put in there. So all those students in summer nine got a, got an opportunity to jump ahead and get those, and get those high school credits before they ever walked into ninth grade.
And help.
So really, we look at, we looked at these 50 or so, you know, eighth graders who we weren't really, you know, who we felt needed this little extra help to get to ninth grade. But then when I would give them the extra help, we did kind of what we've been talking about doing. We gave them accelerated opportunities. So now that not, they're not, they're not behind. They're ahead when they're walking in the door. So that was, so I give the, you know, Miss Bonville and the secondary team a lot of credit for making, you know, trying to push in that to really create challenging opportunities for these students who maybe weren't getting challenging opportunities and passed.
Right, and their health credit, they'll walk-
And the health credit, right.
Which is, which is no small thing.
No doubt.
We closed with a conversation about how to open up our accelerated classes, how to make them more accessible. We talked about the possibility of expanded opportunities at the middle grade level in particular. And that was a pretty exciting conversation, lots of ideas that we'll be talking about in the future. So it was a full meeting, rich meeting. They always are. And our next meeting is November 14th and 9th. Any questions?
I'd like to, not only do we have good participation from the board, but also the administration. Dr. Padalino was often there, Mr. Verge, Dr. Fallecello, and Mrs. Bonville. It's all an excellent team. And I think we made progress. I think now we're at the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions that board members would like to pull from the consent agenda? We're supposed to ask three times, any resolutions to pull? I'll just go with two. Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Second. Any questions on any items? Call the question. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous. I don't remember if there are any. There was a donation for Miller Middle School?
We gratefully accept the donation of 15 computer, sets of computer speakers from Miller Craft Fair. Miller Craft Fair has donated tens of thousands of dollars of equipment over since it began. And those people work very hard to earn that and we gratefully accept those to the middle school.
Old business. One item of old business is, I think it's old. We have a letter from the Ulster County School Boards Association about their meeting on December, on October 10th. They have a plan. They would like each district that's participating to have a presentation and present two accomplishments from the 2018, 2019 school year. Oh, here it is. And, and one current goal for the 2019-2020 school year. The, it's, the meeting is on October 10th. That's also the day of the coffee and conversation and the potluck dinner at the high school. That event is from 4:00 to 7:00. The Ulster County School Boards Association begins at 6:00 with a light dinner, but the meeting itself starts at 6:30. So there will be opportunity for board members who want to attend both functions to do so. So if there's, and they, and they want us to, if we're going to participate, to give them notice of our ability to attend by September 23rd. Also include the names of your participating board members as well as fellow district participants. So since this, since this meeting will include a light dinner, please let us know if anyone attending has any dietary restrictions as well. But we'll probably be, have had our fill at the potluck dinner. Is anyone interested in attending? I am.
Well, I mean, I'll be there, but I'm taking notes, so I don't know that I can present.
Yeah. I hope it, I mean, I hope it works. I hope it's successful. It may be something that draws more participation than we've had in the last year. It wasn't, we had rather sparse attendance, but they were, they were good meetings.
So are they just going to present one school district?
No, every school district will have an opportunity to present its-
So how do we know? When is our turn going to be?
Well, it'll be sometime between 6:30 and 7:30 or something like that. It's not going to be long presentations, but-
At every meeting now?
No, just this one meeting.
So it's our turn? It's Kingston's turn?
No, no. Every, every board that's participating will have-
Oh, really?
A certain amount of, you know, 10 minutes or whatever.
Oh, okay.
Whatever time they need to, I mean, I don't think it'll be, doesn't necessarily have to be a long presentation.
It sounded like it when I read the-
No, I think it's a way for districts to get to know what's happening in other districts. You know, we have a lot that we can show off and it will be nice to tell the rest of the county what we're doing. And I think that that's, that's the point, is to learn a little bit about what all the districts in the county are doing. So I think it'll be 10 minutes each, just a little, you know, here's what's happening around town, here's what's happening in New Paul, here's what's happening in Kingston.
Okay.
Well, I'll send out an email to, and ask whomever would like to go to reply to me. And I'll send that on to the Ulster County School Boards Association. And I think also, I think it's old business because I think we talked about it last week. And that's the resolutions for the, this is one that everybody loves.
Yeah.
The resolutions for the 100th NISBA convention, Rochester, New York, on October 24th to 26th. And this is for the business meeting, which is on the morning of the 26th. And Mr. Spicer will be our representative at the, at the business meeting. And I think, is Mr. Lamb, are you the alternate?
No, I think it's Suzanne.
Suzanne is the alternate, okay. So they send out a list of resolutions every year. And they break them down into two components. One are resolutions recommended by the Resolutions Committee of the NISBA Board of Directors for adoption. And the second group is resolutions that have been made by districts, member, member districts that the, that the Resolutions Committee doesn't agree with or recommends not approving. So I think in, there's, and there's also this year, there's one bylaw amendment that's proposed by the Resolutions Committee. So the bylaw amendment is to add one member from the caucus of black school board members to the Resolutions Committee. That's the only change to the Article 9 of the committees. So is that something that we would support? I think so? Okay. I don't, how, how do you want me to go through these one by one? Or are there, you know, I can give a brief explanation of what each resolution is?
I know, I make a suggestion. What we've done in the past, as I recall, is asked if there were any of the resolutions that were proposed and agreed on by NISBA that we objected to or wanted to amend. And then of the ones that they rejected, were there any that we wanted to actually put forward? It probably would expedite it a little because it's quite involved.
A second, that, that's us.
Because I've read them all. I only, I only have a problem with like two of them.
Right.
I read them all. I have questions about two of them, I think. Maybe three. Do you want to go ahead with your questions?
Show proposed resolution seven, resolve that New York State School Board Association support the requirement that local school districts continue to make determinations as to the substantial equivalency of education, of education delivered in non-public schools. I'm not sure how that would matter to us.
Can I, can I tell you why?
Dr. Padalino?
Well, there's a lot of reasons, but most, most importantly, let's just use Kingston for example. If we were to have three or four private or parochial schools in our district that went to eighth grade and then they came to Kingston High School. And when they come to Kingston High School, if they're not getting equivalent education between kindergarten, eighth grade, and they're walking through our doors, we are now, you know, or if it's a K through five program and they come into our middle school or et cetera. So it's in our best interest. And we are, we are the educational institution in our community, regardless of, you know, the private or parochials and coming to, you know, us being able to oversee and make sure that every student in the Kingston City School District, whether it is ours or not, is receiving a quality education is kind of, I take it as our responsibility. is kind of, I take it as our responsibility, whether they're attending our schools or not.
The follow Dr. Padalino's explanation, I can agree with that.
But so what happens, like, would we ever say that a kid couldn't come to our school because
No, but we might say the school is not delivering an equivalent education, and then they would lose their charter through the state.
Okay, so we could do that?
Correct.
And we currently
Currently can do that.
We can do that, but we have surveyed all the schools in our area, because we do have some private schools in here, and we believe that everybody is providing
We are in the process, there's, this has been a long, this is, this has come out in the last
This is mostly about New York City, right?
Well, yeah, but this is, but it's still, but this has come out in the last twenty-four months as a real, real topic. Now, again, here, it's not a huge deal, especially anymore, we don't have very many private or parochials left. But we do want to make sure that, that they're delivering an equivalent education. So I know Mr. Virge has been working with Good Shepherd for more than a year on this process. And, and so we, we did work with De Brujof on this when, right before they opened the, the Mount Academy, and they went through the whole, the whole process. So we have, we have done it. We are still learning of the new, the new requirements that are out there. But it's, and it's kind of going back and forth with the Board of Regents, and been put off for a month, and put off for the next meeting, those kind of things. But we have, we have been, you know, exerting our, not exerting, but, but actually, it's keeping up our responsibility to do that. And, and I think we should.
I didn't want to support it because I didn't see how that affected us, you know, the, the impact of those programs. But like I said, Dr. Padalino explained it very well, and showed the bridge, so I can take that right off my list.
Yeah, well, I think that the responsibility of the school, of the school board for private and parochial schools within their district has been on the books for quite some time. And it's just been largely ignored until recently, and
Till the former commissioner brought it up into a public Yeah, into a very public, in a very public way a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so I think it's sensible to do, I mean, you have situations where, I mean, we had, we had Coleman close, and we have, how many students coming into Kingston High School from Coleman? Forty or something?
Yeah, about forty, I think thirty-seven, I bet Ms. Bondville knows Coleman students, how many do we have?
We have forty-two.
Forty-two Coleman students, so.
So when they come into our schools, to high school, you know, they're expecting to graduate on their schedule, their age schedule. So we have to be sure as they're going through school that they're getting a, an equivalent education. So
My only other one was our proposed Resolution Nineteen, and it says, "Resolve that the New York State School Board Association reduce and widely recommend the adoption of sample board policy stating that members who have been newly elected to serve as officers will participate in at least one accredited officer training." And unless I'm misconstruing, what we do do, I've done three trainings.
It's different for officers.
Okay, then different, okay, then that's it, okay. That would not be the issue.
Any other questions on that one?
I, I agree with that, because I think, as they stated in the rationale, the board officers don't have any more power than any other trustee, but they do have more responsibility.
Right.
And I think it's important that, like, they have an opportunity to hear what other districts are doing. And I, I think that's a prime opportunity to do that by attending the training where you're going to encounter other officers and, and common problems, so.
Okay. So I had a question about proposed Resolution Six, which is resolved that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation that would require the independent hearing officer in a thirty-twenty-eight hearing to accept the penalty sought by the district if there is a finding of guilt. I'm not sure that I agree with that, I might be in a minority on that, but I'll just put it out there.
That's something we've, we've been stung by, I agree with it, because we, we have been in the position where the hearing officer did not accept the penalty that we sought, even though there was a finding of guilt. And then that leaves us in a quandary, now what do you do, you return that person to the classroom? And we don't really have any recourse, even if they've been charged with a felony. So I would support that.
Okay.
I support the Joe.
Okay. So you vote in favor of that?
I, I definitely, I support that, only because being a school principal, from where, if you, if you sit in a principal's seat, you need to see a straight line, where is this thing going, and where does it finally end? And without this clause, it, it's exactly like Ms. Shear said. We've gone through the process, we've, we've come up with a, a resolution and a consequence, and now no? I, I, I agree, this is, this kind of cements the process.
Okay. I had a question on Resolution Fifteen, resolve that NISBA seek to initiate legislation at the state or federal level that would provide for regulations to identify proper practices and enforce sanctions for improper practices related to the Participation of Parent Advocates Act Committee on Special Education Meetings and Hearings. So they recommend it. Is it a problem?
No, I, I had a question about that one too, it's funny, it's seven and fifteen. It seems like this is coming from a very specific incident, it sounds like. I, I don't know, I mean, how, doesn't, doesn't our code of conduct, and doesn't all of that apply to those situations? I mean, they're saying that's not enough, but I don't understand how it's not enough.
Well, right now, parents can bring in anybody they want as an advocate, and they don't always adhere to their code of conduct, so.
Yeah, no, but, but, but don't we have, doesn't the code of conduct cover this, I guess is what I'm saying.
I think it's more along the lines of it's not that people are acting inappropriately in a way that violates our, our uniform code of conduct and, and for adults and for students. It's more looking at a, a growing, also, for lack of a better word, I guess, industry around forceful advocacy, advocacy in, for special edu, in special education meetings that is borders on, you know, threatening lawsuits, et cetera. So if those things are out there, I think that's what this is, this is what's being, it's not, it's not the local community, community advocate who comes in with one of our students and sits down to make sure that they, parent understands, it's this new
It's like an aggressive, like
And I, and I don't use the word industry, you know, I use that word on purpose, of forceful advocacy that's difficult to deal with.
Loudest voice in the room.
Right, I mean, but, but to me, you would have to be pretty, you would have to be pretty careful about this, though, because they are an advocate, and that is the job. And so, you know, it, I guess, and I understand that we're, this is just a NISBA resolution to initiate, you know, somewhere someday. But, you know, that's a fine line, and, and, or maybe in some instances it isn't so fine. However, these are, they're advocates, and that's what they're supposed to be doing. And I would want to be careful about what that legislation said, so that it wasn't actually then restricting that role. Because parents, it, it is complicated, and special ed law is very complicated. And if you don't, if your advocate is only, you know, allowed certain space to move, you know, I would hope that it wouldn't render it, you know, not as effective as it's supposed to be.
The unfortunate thing is actually in the CSE meeting, everyone in the room is an advocate. And so it's unfortunate that we have this kind of conversation.
I think that special ed law is really confusing, and I think that the options are very confusing. And I think that CSE meetings are short, I know they don't seem short, but they are. Well, it's a short amount of time for a parent to
Correct.
It's a short amount of time for a parent to digest all that information, they don't necessarily know what all their options are, they're not well-versed. So I'm not suggesting that any special ed administrator, particularly ours, are not advocates. I'm just saying that it's hard for a parent to know what their options are, and an advocate sitting next to them can help them with that. And I would hate to see an advocate's, you know, potential hands strained or tied, or hands tied behind their backs because of some legislation, because of that, so.
All the CSE meetings I've been involved with, if, if Dr. Dukovich's outcome is possible, that, because a, a lot of times, an advocate is another parent whose child went through the same thing, and they can answer questions or explain things to, to the parent in, in, in language they understand. And if that person is blocked from a meeting, for me, that becomes a problem. And that's most of the advocates I've ever seen, that they brought in their friend whose child went through the same thing. If that person is blocked from that meeting, if that's a possible outcome that Dr. Dukovich is concerned about, I, I agree with her. I, I, that would, that would be a real problem if those people were not allowed in meetings.
Well, it doesn't sound like, they're not saying that those people wouldn't be allowed in the meeting, this resolution. But it sounds like what they're asking for is some kind of legislation to make sure that those people behave.
That there are rules.
Oh, I see.
That there are rules that govern, and I hear Dr. Padalino's point, that if, that, you know, that there, I'm sure there is an industry that's kind of building up around this, and that there's this, you know, at the same time, there's a reason for these, for these advocates. And I wouldn't want to see us
Right.
You know, it's, maybe it's a fine line, so I, you know, it's hard, it's hard to say we should, I mean, I, we're, we're, they're seeking to initiate legislation at the state or federal level. You know, at some point, I, before I approved something like that, I'd want to know what that legislation is. I hear, we're not at that point here, so I'm, I'm actually that I would support this one, but that doesn't mean that, I, I see a rationale for it, but I would need more detail in order to support it, but, you know, I'm one person, so.
So all in favor of the, of supporting the proposed Resolution, Resolution Fifteen? Raise your hand.
Supporting it?
Supporting it. Following, following in the recommendation of the Resolutions Committee.
Are we going Resolution or resolution?
No, they're, they're
Well, I mean, this is a question, this is a question that
Right, they've recommended that we support this, and Jim is asking, Mr. Shaughnessy is asking for, who on the board does?
Well, I think an advocate should be held accountable for their conduct. And, and districts, I, I don't know what kind of initiation, you know, what kind of legislation they want to initiate. I would imagine it would have to do with ejecting people if they acted inappropriately.
Or not allowing them, or not allowing them to participate.
Well, or violate a confidentiality, all of those things would be reasons to be concerned with their presence.
I have to agree with Robin, with Mr. Johowitz, because first of all, I, I see this as legislation that's being acted as, from a result of a bad situation. I think, I, I think it's like, very pinpointed, and I, I don't think, do we have a problem in our CSEA meetings here with advocates?
No, not necessarily with advocates, no.
I mean
There, there is always, there's the, the, you know, exception for every rule, but, oh, in general, no. Our advocates tend to be exactly who we're talking about.
Of my buildings in Newburgh, of the, of the CSE meetings, and I got to tell you, I never felt like an advocate was improper. And I, I, I worry about blocking people out that should be there for the student. And I know, we were there as advocates too, but those people had information and could explain to the parent and had information that we didn't necessarily have, and I, I think they have it good. If you have a problem, then that's, you'd go to the conduct hall, I agree with you.
But after Dr. Dukovich's plan, it doesn't mean they're barred, it means that there's a kind of a code of conduct to how you behave in that meeting, that that's what this is talking about, is that what, what we're thinking this is talking about? We don't really, you don't
We don't know.
It's very
We don't know what they're doing.
It's, it's very implicit.
To your point, Mr. Spicer, like, I, I don't, I would also be wary of any kind of legislation that tied people's hands so much that they couldn't be the advocates they needed to be. So I think that it's not just an you're in or you're out situation, I think that you could, you know, you could create legislation that rendered them ineffective, and that, I think, is, is, would be a problem. But we don't know, because it doesn't say.
So all in favor of supporting this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to supporting the resolution, say nay.
Nay.
Really opposed, but, you know.
Or you can abstain. So I don't think we support it.
So fifteen's a no.
Fifteen is a no.
Oh, fifteen, no.
It's like the electoral college, T B, you get in there, no one knows how you vote for you, you can change.
I'm keeping notes for you, Mr. Spicer, so I will let you know what the board has decided you cannot support.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer.
Mr. Shaughnessy, I, I don't want to tell you how to do anything, but there are nineteen other resolutions that they approved. Are there any that anybody feels very strongly about? You had one, or Mr. Spicer had two.
Yeah, and
Dr. Dukovich had one.
So we looked at four out of twenty. And then there's
I think he, he changed his name.
I did, I'm, I'm both of mine, I'm fine.
So, yeah.
So then there's a number of resolutions not approved, or not recommended for approval. And I think there's twenty-one through twenty-six, so I guess that's five or six.
But have we decided, you know, one through fourteen and sixteen through twenty yet?
Well, I mean, we asked for, I mean, is it, does anyone have any others among the first group that they want to bring up? The first twenty?
So they're all yeses.
So we're in agreement with all of them, except those that we
So one through fourteen. Sixteen through twenty.
Yeah, except for fifteen.
Fifteen's a no.
Camille can provide, Mr. Spicer, any
And then there's, and then there's the six resolutions not recommended. I did notice that of the six, three of them are proposed by Locust Valley School Board, and it's, all has to do with ethical practices on social media. I think that's a very, I probably would agree with, with not supporting those resolutions.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have any more, there's not anybody else?
No.
Okay. Okay. So I think that ends that.
So our delegate
Our delegate is, has our, has our thoughts.
My notes are here.
These ones that were voting, voting no for, do I have to explain?
No.
No.
You just hold up your paddle.
Just so you know.
Ross.
Okay. So I, I think I treated that as old business? So is there any new business? Okay, old business, okay, more old business, yes?
Or, did you follow me?
Okay.
I would, I just wanted to ask the class size question.
Oh, that's what I was
I know we probably don't have a final report yet, because we're still kind of in flux a little bit, but I'm wondering how to where we're set on.
We are, we are in overall very good shape. We have a, currently a problem, an issue that we're dealing with at Crosby Kindergarten, which I think the answer is probably going to have to be opening another section. We did have a late influx of students that first week of school in Crosby. As you probably know, we moved, we actually reduced the sections, and, and, based on our initial, first couple of days of school, we reduced a section in kindergarten and moved it to the fourth grade, to, or third grade, to reduce those class sizes. So we did that, and then all of a sudden, we got students in kindergarten. So we're not going to move back, we're going to look to move forward and, and probably add another section at Crosby. But again, we're, we're still looking, right now, we're in the twenty-five range at kindergarten, which is a little above where we want to be. But other than that, we, we've managed to keep at that twenty, twenty-two, we, we are right at twenty-two in several places. Our kindergarten is where our growth is, is happening this year, it seems. So are, we are at that twenty-two, but we're going to try to hold that line, and we are holding that. holding that line pretty much across the board, other than that Crosby situation.
Question about Crosby, is there a physical space?
Yes, we have the space.
I know the last time that Robert Graves, so how's Robert Graves doing kindergarten ops? They were here, the parents came in.
Yeah, Robert Graves is at, they're, they're at twenty-two.
Okay.
They're right at the twenty-two, yeah. This is three sections of twenty-two.
I think this is old business. We talked about the goals reflecting the schedule in the annotated calendar, where are we with that?
I have, I have last year's, and I have it ready for the next meeting. Well, we, I mean, we have, so, I mean, we, one thing we do have, in terms of goals, is to pick dates for, we have four schedules, our goals call for four.
And reports, too.
Well, the TNL minutes that will come out soon will have a list of the data reports, and that's, that scheduling, so why have that? And that would probably factor into the annotated calendar, I just don't have it yet.
Okay.
But we did discuss it, right?
And the training as well, is that where you're referring to?
Well, we have book, book discussions, and there was a training that I proposed for board goals, and there was a, a retreat of interpersonal relations, so I think that we select, so we specified four over the, over the eight remaining months, or nine remaining months, is that right? So, huh?
We did, yes.
So we have, so what is, we could do that now, or we can do it?
Oh, no, I mean, it's something, if you want to handle it, be happy to.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I, well, what is, what is the book, the white...
White Fragility.
White Fragility. Is that going to be a two-meeting discussion, or is that going to be a one-meeting discussion?
I thought we said a four-meeting discussion, and we were looking to use the facilitator from the high school, so we'll have to...
Oh, four, four meetings on the, on the, on the, on the book?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and then there's other, and then, so we're talking about six, right? Okay.
I don't know that all of the, that the quarterly meetings were all going to be on that book, but the idea was...
Equity, yeah.
The idea was that it would be quarterly meetings with this, on the equity focus, and that White Fragility would be a way to start, that's all, that's my recollection of the conversation.
Okay.
I'll make cookies.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to work with me?
Sure.
For the October second meet, October second meet, and we'll discuss it, we'll have some, we'll bring something back.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, you know, we'll, we'll do it.
Okay. And did you have anything else you...
New business.
New business, new business, new business.
Okay.
You want new business now?
Unless there's more old business.
Pardon me?
Unless there's more old business.
Nope.
No more old business, okay, new business. Ladies first.
Okay, thank you. So, Dr. Pedalino, I know in the past, several board members like to visit schools, so I was wondering if you could reach out to the principals to see when a good day is, or when any day is, or...
Yes.
Because I know we have to notify you and the principal of the school, so.
So annually, for new board members, annually, what I do in September is I'll reach out to the principals and say, is there a, is there a good day, a day that's better for, you know, regular meeting, or regular visits to the board? For seventy years, I think the answer back from the principals is come any time, but I would still like to extend that, you know, that option to the principals, so I'll send that email out tomorrow, and I'll get back to the board as soon as I get response to the principals.
But we still have to notify them, ask them if it's okay, and notify you.
Yes, we appreciate knowing that you're coming.
Yeah, that's actually in the, in policy.
It's in policy.
It is.
Right, okay. Okay, so we'll have a report back. And, Mr. Michael?
Yes, I want to talk about the concussions after, you know, with student athletes. I just read in the memo for our insurance group that states that every student who has a concussion has to take the test. I know, or the first ones, we came up with a policy about concussion, but I wanted a clarification about, do we agree to let the student return to the game? Because it seems that the insurance company says, after you take the test, it's okay to go back to the game, which I very strongly oppose that, because I believe that the young mind, the young brain, you know, developing, if has a concussion, you should not be returning to the game, so.
Well, we have a policy that covers returning to the game, or returning to any activity after a possible discussion. I think with the Utica National Pamphlet, or brochure, they have, they're in partnership with a company that has a, a, a rating mechanism of some type, and the question would be, do we want to utilize that in any way? Is that...
We, we have, and, and one of the things I'd say that we are way ahead of everyone else in, last year, we had a, we had brought in an outside organization to audit our concussion protocol and our concussion policy, to make sure it was being followed, and it was being followed the way it was supposed to be with each of our students who had concussion or concussion-like symptoms. So we have, you know, we really dove into ours, and we have our concussion protocols, we have an on-staff athletic trainer who works with that, we have phenomenal school nurses and our school physician who, who work with our athletic department to make sure. So we, we make sure our students go through the full concussion protocol, they don't, it's not like it used to be, you know, you get your bell ring, you go back in the game. Now, now we're going, you know, we're going through our protocols, the students are staying out of sports until, you know, they are cleared again, you know, through, using that process. So I think there are a lot of different products out there about, around this whole thing, and some might be great, and some might be not so great, but I think we're, we're using our people and our, and our, you know, the professionals who do this to make those calls worse and follow our protocols, and I think we've been doing a very good job of it.
So all, all our athletic coaches that go through these, impact testing?
Our athletic coaches know what our protocols are for, for our students as far as concussions or even concussion symptoms, and again, like I said, the, the reason I can say that and feel pretty good about it is we did have that audit, and we did have that, that report back to us on how we're doing with following our procedures, so I feel very good, I feel pretty confident that our coaches are doing the right thing.
I'll just, my, I, I think we're doing an excellent job in that. My son had a concussion, and they, they were, they identified it, they were so good about it, we then went to the doctor, he was no sports for two weeks, which was horrible, he couldn't move for two weeks. But then even after that, there was this integration process where he had to go slowly back into sports and slowly back into gym, and they were so, they were so serious about it, that it was actually the end of the year, and he didn't get through the five days, so he had to start it again when he started, but, you know, they had to make sure, and you know, it was, he was like, why am I doing this? It was, you know, it's very serious, they did it very seriously, and they were very good about it, and they were, they went to gym to make sure he was not participating.
Okay. And Mr. Dixon's in the back shaking his head because he's part of that process.
And it was not a football concussion, I will just say that.
And, I mean, the concussion doesn't have to be sports-related, it can be a fall or something like that, any, any, any head trauma could result in a concussion.
That would also put the child from going back to gym, same protocol?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
We've had fits at my...
Oh, yes, I mean, it's real.
Okay, any other new business? Board member announcements? Public participation, if any member of the public would like to address the board?
Maureen Bowers, so, okay, I just, very positive board meeting, lots of good things happening, but I wanted to highlight two things and say thank you, and one of them is for the vision of moving Crown Street here and the preschool program. I did the little tour after the ribbon coating, and it was really, really impressive to see. We didn't see too much of the offices, but we saw the preschool spaces, and it was really, really lovely to see and lovely to know that children are back in this building. I also wanted to thank you for the vision of partnering with our project, and I think Lester did a wonderful job in explaining it. I think those kinds of partnerships are so rich for our community and for our district, and I want to thank you for your vision and participating in that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, go ahead.
Can I respond?
Sure.
Just to respond to Mrs. Bowers, it was about seven and a half years ago when I was sitting in the old, old boardroom interviewing for this position, and Ms. Bowers was on this side of the table as a board member, and I was asked a certain question, and I said, we were insione, and that, my answer was, I would sell this place, and I, Mrs., I, in my mind, I had Mrs. Bowers, I was a no, you know, she was not voting for me to get this job, because she was very offended by that. So I'm glad that you liked, that we did this.
I'll come around. I'll swipe that. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Some whoop. Some whoop, three times.
All in favor? All in favor, leave. All in favor.